That's it for the blue cards.
Okay, next item, please.
Action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If they are, we will exclude them from the motion below.
I just am going to want to make a comment on number 14. But I, we don't have to poll it.
I would like to poll item number three, please. I have further questions. I've had questions prior that I get answers for. The answers to these questions will affect my vote, so.
Okay, so you want to poll number three? Anything else?
I had a question on number five. I addressed it to Mr. Wall earlier today, but I don't know if anybody else had questions on it.
I did, there was an email that went out.
Yeah, okay. So, I didn't know if Tom wanted to speak on it or not.
He sent an email.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
When I was in the first meeting, probably.
So, we don't need that polled?
Okay, no, I didn't want it polled anyway.
No, you didn't want to poll it? Okay, all right.
You can comment.
Yeah, you can make a comment if you want to.
So, three is the only one we pulled?
So, three is the only one being polled, yes.
Move that action items numbered, excuse me, one through 16 be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of three.
So moved.
Support? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
I thought there was comments.
I do have, I do have a comment, but I said I would go ahead and let the vote. Number 14 was on the anti-bullying reaffirmation. I just want to say, only because we've had a lot of conversation about it going back and forth, and I've always said that my vote is my voice. And I am voting for this, but I still had reservations about the substance, the wording, the structure of the resolution. I felt it could have been improved. I made several suggestions. I know other people made suggestions over time. None of the suggestions were accepted. The author continued to want to keep it the way it was originally presented to us. I just wanted to clarify that while I support the substance of reaffirming and acknowledging October as National Bully Month and whatnot, that I still had issues with the way the verbiage was constructed in the resolution. And that I would like to hope that in the future, when we have anything that we all want to attach our names to, that there's some sort of compromise that would reflect our voices so that we all felt that it sounded like our voice to some extent. And/or if that's not possible, then, you know, moving forward, that, you know, we're a team, and this team has to represent everybody's perspective. And I would hope that we can respect that there will be differences from time to time as to how we want to put forth a idea. And I just want to make sure that we're all respected for that and that we're not put in a position. I know trustee Mead had a statement as the last time that he felt kind of boxed in if there was no changes to the resolution, but he didn't, if he voted no, it would look like he was not supporting the concept. And that wasn't what his, he would have been voting no for. And I kind of feel the same way, that I've, I would have preferred something written a little differently. It wasn't there, so I have to support this, but it's not to the standard I would have liked to have seen it. And that's all I want to say about that. Number five, oh, okay, trustee Barry?
I want to comment on that. I mean, this was brought to us at least a couple of months ago. I don't think anybody would have had a problem if we wanted to make any changes.
Oh, I made several suggestions and they were all rejected.
Can I?
Let me finish, please, let me finish. Okay, the only thing I want to bring out, this is, I mean, yeah, we all, everybody, the board, the superintendent, everybody in this district will support the core of this resolution. I want to bring out, I just want to read number seven. No, I'm not going to read all of it. I'm just going to read number seven, unless you want me to.
Wait, you're going to read?
I just want to read just this one sentence. It's whereas, and I numbered them, it's number seven.
Oh, on the resolution.
Whereas the Dearborn Board of Education is committed to promoting effective anti-bullying policies and procedures so that every student and every staff member, I'm going to repeat, and every staff member feel physically and emotionally safe, thus creating a positive climate and school culture. Just want to bring that out.
Okay.
That's part of the resolution.
And the resolution will be published.
One thing that I wanted to say, I think it's important to note that the district as a whole, when we worked on this like nine-plus years ago.
Yes.
We were way ahead of other districts. We were ahead in the nation. We led this, the response to bullying behavior initiative. Not only was it a leader in the nation of how to handle the situation, but we were also way ahead of the legislation that finally came down mandating that districts have a bullying, a response to bullying behavior initiative. So, I just wanted to say that I thought it was important that, to know that once again, we took charge and moved ahead and led on this area. One other thing that I would like to say, it's also important to know that the current policy is outdated. So, in the policy committee, I think it's important that we reference the policy number in the resolution because the language will change as soon as that wording is changed in the policy.
May I respond? As president, I think, first of all, thank you trustees for putting your name into this, although you do have some disagreements as far as the language. I just want to make it clear that I did take in a lot of feedback from all of you, and we delayed it a few times so we can take this feedback. Now, some of the feedback was taken. I did accept it per Dave's suggestions, which were very helpful, trustee Lane's suggestions, trustee McDonald, and I incorporated them into, and trustee, also President Peskov, into the resolution. There were some suggestions of deleting this, the references, or the, I think the biggest disagreement is why are we putting the language of the policy on the resolution? And this is where we kind of differed, and I even seeked MASP counsel on this to say, is this problematic to do? And he said, you can do it either way. You can reference the policy by name and number, or if you want to overemphasize, which I actually wanted to do, is to put this policy on there. The notion that this policy is outdated, or it needs to be revisited, or that we're not, it's still on the books. It's still our policy, and we must abide by it until this board, in a public meeting, changes that policy, then we do not follow that policy anymore. But as I read it in our bylaws, I believe as a district, we either have to act on it or in this room, we have to make those changes that we feel are necessary to some outdated policy. So, I tried as much as possible to get everybody's suggestions in there, but for those suggestions that would take away from the powerful meaning of this resolution, I kind of stood grounds on this and I said, it will remove what my first intentions is to bring this forward because we've done a great job in leading the way, but things have changed. And unfortunately, I don't know if we, as a district, have lost ways in this. I know every building is doing their own way of doing combating bullying, whether it's between students or staff or members. We want to make sure that we have a bullying-free district and we have bullying-free district, buildings, and we want to embrace that culture. And I think we really need to revisit our policy and say, what are we doing to making sure that we are, in the new challenges of cyberbullying and all of these things, what are we doing to making sure that our students are not bullying each other or our, there are no acts of bullying in our schools, period, by anybody who steps in into our schools? So, thank you once again. I apologize if I became a little bit too aggressive on this because I, like trustee McDonald, we kind of felt this as a, took this as personal. So, I hope that people will read this resolution. I welcome students to share this with their peers, same with staff. It's something that I really am very proud of, and I thank you as well for agreeing to it, although you do disagree, which I respectfully, you know, we have the right to disagree on the language, but on absolutely the substance is there. So, thank you so much.
Okay. Did you want to make a comment on five, or you just wanted to make sure everybody had?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware.
So, then we'll.
If they had questions, if they could answer them.
We'll read the summary. Oh, wait, you have. Yeah.
Yeah, she's here, yeah. So, I want to.
Do you vote? Do you vote?
Oh.
We did.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. Yeah, I went ahead and then said, do the comments after we voted.
You have three.
Yeah, we still have three to do, but we do the summaries of the ones we voted on. We did vote, yeah.
You did.
Yes.
You want me to call her?
Yes.
All right, so we have, and she's been waiting here.
Yes, because I don't want to keep her waiting.
Nicole Rayback is the new assistant principal at William Ford Elementary, so we're calling her up, and I believe she has some family members here. I know Principal Higgins is here as well. Let's give her a big round of applause. Congratulations, Nicole.
Thank you so much. I want to thank the board, Dr. Maliko, Mr. Higgins, the executive leadership team, my colleagues, as well as my family for not only the support, but also this opportunity. I've had the privilege of serving this wonderful community for the past 12 years as a math teacher at Fortson High School, an instruction and interventionist at Woodworth Middle School, an instructional coach at Bryant Middle School and Smith Middle School, as well as currently an administrative intern at Henry Ford Elementary. My passion for Dearborn Public Schools is deeply rooted in my love and admiration for not only the students, the parents, but also the amazing teachers and administrators in the entire Dearborn community. So, I really appreciate this opportunity, and I'm excited to work on the team at Henry Ford, so, I mean, William Ford.
Get those called, right?
That's okay, remember when Tom, I'm going to just pull it up. You want to hear the story of the snow emergency at the wrong school we went, right? His first year, so. And Brian Wiston used to tell me all the time, he'd go between Henry Ford and William Ford, he could never get them. But anyway, William Ford, congratulations.
Yes, thank you so much.
You have some family, you want to mention who's here?
I do, I have my husband, my mom, my dad, and our friend Debbie.
Well, great. Thank you for sticking it out.
Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, back to number, oh, wait, do you, summary?
Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of contract to Superior Text. Number four, approval of purchase of two cargo vans. Number five, approval of contract to Trinity Transportation. Number six, approval of a contract to National Trails. Number seven, approval of change orders. Numbers eight through 11, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number 12, approval of financial statement. Number 13, approval of heroic efforts resolution per board report 19-70. Number 14, approval of anti-bullying resolution per board report 19-71. Number 15, approval of assistant principal at William Ford Elementary. Number 16, approval of donations. Going back to action item number three, do you want me just to do the recommended action?
Just do the recommended action, please.
It is recommended that the board approve the purchase of 4,338 licenses for Windows 10 in the amount of $210,862.80.
I need a motion and support. Someone?
Second.
All right, now, trustee Moses.
Okay, so, Dr. Maliko, I don't know who's here to.
I'll ask Mr. Patterson to come up. Might as well just do that now.
I have asked in the email about, obviously, the huge rate at this, but before that, I know Microsoft is decommissioning Windows 7 at the end of this year, so they're no longer supporting, and they're no longer updating the operating system. But why wasn't this done a long time ago when we, when Microsoft was offering it for free, at least to personal use? I don't know about, you know, volume use. Were they offering that as well? If you upgrade, you upgrade for free during that period of time?
The upgrade was for home and personal use only. Microsoft has never offered a enterprise-level upgrade for free.
Okay.
We've been working with Microsoft for quite a while on this, as Microsoft has gone through different versions. There's a wide variety of versions on, of Microsoft Office, of Microsoft Windows 10.
Right.
And we've worked with Microsoft for quite a while to make sure that we're getting the right version and the version that meets the needs for an educational institution.
And they do have now a distinct version for education, right? Education Pro or an education for Windows?
Correct, there's an EDU version.
Right.
And that is one of the things that we worked, that we were working through with Microsoft.
Right. And just for the other trustees to also understand, I'm, obviously, I'm in tax, so this kind of thing is, always comes all the time. Microsoft doesn't sell directly the license.
That's correct.
You would have to go through a dealer, same like our companies.
Yeah, that was, that was reported in the email.
Right, yeah, so they, they would have to, you'd have to go to a reseller or kind of a dealer, and they give you that license. Now, was that bid it out, or are we using the same, is RMC or CWA the same?
We went, we went with, this is the RMC cost. We did try to get some additional bids. We did get a bid from Logisoft as well, and when we got it from Logisoft, they, she said, well, I can bid it, but you're going to go with RMC, they're the lowest cost. So, we did get, we did get at least one other bid, which was more than the $48.60 per computer that we picked up.
Right, which was 58, which was way more. But is that, was that, when we did that bid, is that we're asking everybody, or were you just asked one company?
We asked a variety of companies. We could only get a couple of them that actually bid, that actually gave us a quote.
Okay. So, I, all right, I don't know how this works because, I mean, Microsoft, usually, they tell you a ballpark number, but obviously, these numbers differ based on the usage and based on the volume. They were saying for, for that kind of number, a ballpark number is between $38 and $42, so that's a little bit less than what is being presented now. But I'm saying, did we have enough time? Because since this is kind of being decommissioned next week or next, next month, did we have enough time to?
The Windows 7, the support is coming to an end next month, but this is something that will be ongoing. It's not like Windows 7 will stop working in January.
Yeah, yeah, it won't.
So, this is, this will be a process for us.
Shouldn't we do this a little bit earlier? Because if Microsoft is ending support right now, we're going to lose some of the security patches, all of that stuff. So, are we doing that work immediately after we approve this contract?
We'll begin immediately, yes. We've already begun, we do have some Windows 10 licensing in place.
Okay.
And we are, so we do have Windows 10 computers that are in place, and we have started rolling that out. There is work to do, but we're comfortable in the timeline that we're, we're following with this.
Okay.
All right. Trustee Barry?
Did we just solicit the other company, or did we go off for the normal process of bidding a contract out?
We solicited other quotes.
So, we didn't go through the proper process then, bidding it out?
We did not go through a, the formal bid process.
Because that's not what I understood. I mean, you said, yes, we did, but that's, from reading the information here, the way I understood it, that, you know, we didn't go through a process, but we did contact other companies and get prices.
Correct.
Okay, Dr. Maliko.
Well, I'd like to in comment, I just want to comment on the RMC, which has been around for a long time. So, the reason, it's a statewide consortium, so what they do, and the reason you're confident in it, not just technology, but it's the entire state going and saying, what is the best price you can get as a bigger group? Okay? So, what happens is then there's confidence, and so you, we can legally take that bid because they've actually done the work for us and they save us time. And it's not just technology, it's all sorts of items. They've been around for many years, and I know, so you're actually getting a better consortium. A lot of times, the county will want to do a consortium on different things, but when it's the state, it's even a bigger process because you have more people in, in the process that want this product. And so, therefore, you're getting a better deal.
And they've, and they've actually done the bidding process through a bunch of different.
I understand this, I get this. But I mean, what does our policy say? Does policy say when we have, we're going out for this kind of contract, do we have to bid it out or no?
Our policy allows us to use consortium prices.
Okay, that's, I just want to bring that out there, yeah, because this doesn't say that we bid it out, we solicited, that we didn't bid it out. But if you're saying that, that's, you know.
Yeah, we still like to do our own bidding of the prices, just to be sure.
I'm good with that.
And so, I, and can I just say too, so you're going to see, when you see RMC, you're going to see it on other products, not just technology. So, just understand, that's why I wanted to point it out, because I actually remember the RMC's been around for years going back. I can remember when I was a principal at Salina, and they, and it is, I remember going out, and it was like, you get the best price, you just go in the book, you open their book. At that time, it was an electronic, it was the book, and you're going to get the best.
And they're a nonprofit organization in Michigan.
Yeah, they're for educate, yes. Yeah, they support. So, that's why we're confident in that, because of that process.
But are they always the lowest cost? That's my question, so.
I, I.
I mean, I would think they would be, but not necessarily, okay.
So, I think that it's good doing due diligence to see if there's, you know, other costs out there.
All right, are we ready to take a vote?
Do we need a roll call vote?
Do we need a roll call?
No.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, trustee unanimous. All right, next item, please.
We have no discussion items. Board of Education Business acknowledgment of correspondence.
I think other than what looks like some Christmas cards. Does anybody have any?
We, I think we all received an email, citizens for a donation, and David sent out an email explaining things. I get that part, but that brought up a question, because we always get outside vendors advertising on our mail, on our emails. Is that allowable, or how do we handle that?
We can, we would look at it, and if we saw someone really trying to, you know, bring information in through a vendor group that we don't want, we can spam it, you know, we can do it as individuals, or we can block it. A lot of times, and I think, yeah, you know, what we're also afraid of is not just vendors because that came in, and you're wondering the legitimacy sometimes in today's day and age. So, I'll be honest, that's what I, I didn't know, and a lot of times, I'm, I've been, you know, through electronic, it's been a target, and Troy, that's why I've got that two-step authentic. I've got extra security protocols, so people can't get into my things, but we've had, you know, fake emails going in trying to elicit money, and so, we did check, and that's why David sent that out. But I agree, I, the same thing when it came in, I wasn't, because today's day and age of internet, you can get a lot of information that may give the details. So, what we do is, I actually, when I saw it, I sent it over to Troy and David to get, to vet, to actually vet it, and to look at it and tell me legitimacy. Sometimes employees will get emails, and there's a lot of Troy spam that's going through, and so, we do our best, but it gets through to me. A lot of times, I can just spam it on my own if I think. If we think it's something that someone's trying to attack or send a scam of some sorts, then Troy will often send an alert out to the district to say, watch for these, you know, kind of emails, but in this case, it wasn't. But we do have that process.
Sure, no, that's, that's, I mean, that's a good idea.
And if a vendor.
But what if, what if, let's say, okay, I am a Dearborn businessman, if I wanted to advertise to thousands of employees, am I allowed to do that?
David, how, if we had many, I mean, our policy.
I guess what I'm getting at, if somebody's going to use us to advertise, why don't they support our district, support our students, and come to David and find a way to.
Yeah, after consulting with our technology expert, Mr. Patterson, you know, our emails are public.
Sure.
So, what can happen is that anybody could go through and start collecting all of these public emails, create their own database, and then start sending emails in to the district. As Dr. Maliko pointed out, if we get too many of those from a certain, you know, company or whatever, then we would then work with Troy's department to set up some kind of blocking for that. So, no, people just, you know, can they do it? Yeah, they can, because our emails are public information. Do we allow it to happen? No, not if it's happening on a, you know, large scale and we're seeing it coming in a lot, and then, like I said, we would work with Troy.
Somebody doesn't mind of that.
You know, department. Now, if someone calls me and says, hey, you know, I'm selling, you know, I've got this great company, and I'd like to offer cotton candy to all your students, will you send out this email for me? I will say, no, we don't do that. And so.
We do have policies.
Yeah, and we do have policies in place that determines what type of advertising we will accept and not accept.
I would like to think that if somebody's going to use our employees to advertise to them, that somehow, some way, there's some kind of gain for the district or the students.
Yeah.
Maybe go through PTA or go through the booster clubs.
Well, and many businesses that do, you know, come to us and want to advertise with us, I will, and we are not able to do it for them, I will either send them to the union and they will work through the unions to share their message with, through the, through the unions, or I will steer them toward the PTA, and they can do it that way as well. Or the athletic boosters are another group of people that can, that we can, that can utilize that.
Trustee Thor.
Just thinking about the first bell publication that we send out. Now, the previous version was ad-supported. Have we given any consideration to any type of advertising in that to offset our cost for the mailing?
So, the other publication was a private company, and they had no affiliation whatsoever with the district, other than that we, we helped provide editorial content to them so they could do any kind of advertising that they wanted. Because we are a public education institution, we get special rates on our mailings, which keeps the cost of that publication way down. Literally, you know, just a little over $3,000 in an issue for each edition that we send out. We cannot by law start putting in advertising in that. We could do something along the lines of a company's name and their business address and just say that, you know, we would like to thank these, these sponsors or these participants for supporting the Dearborn Public Schools, and put their name and address, but that's all we could really do. We couldn't even say, you know, open from nine to five, or, you know, visit on the weekends for these great specials. So, so we have, we have very tight controls over what we can actually put in that publication as far as advertising goes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, trustee Moses?
Just on trustee Barry's comments about people having access to emails of staff or, I think Europe has done a great job of that, and they came up with the new law about the GDPR, I think, General Data Protection Regulation, and they actually make it a violation if you send somebody's an email without their first consent. So, in order for them to be added to your database, they have to consent that they, you can email them. So, if you get too many violations of that, that company kind of gets into murky law or, they get into litigation with the government, or somebody can sue them based on this law. So, it would be courteous. I mean, I usually get added to a lot of email lists that I've, like, I never signed up for this, and you always hit unsubscribe, 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 but unfortunately.
It'll just get you more.
People find your email somewhere. I mean, our emails are posted, as far as us.
No, different than the do-not-call list.
Right, so, unfortunately, they will be there, but as of right now, the U.S. does not have a similar law. Maybe in the future, we may, and that would actually alleviate some of the spam that we're always getting.
Okay, next item, please.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Yes.
The Policy Committee met, and we had quite a few things that we discussed. So, one of them was staff reduction policy. We discussed the recall rights of probationary teachers with a minimally effective year-end ranking, and we'll be going with the language proposed by the DFT, which maintains current recall rights for teachers with minimally effective year-end rankings. Teacher Evaluation Committee voted that highly effective teachers with more than 16 absences over a 10-year period will be ranked as effective teachers for the purpose of staff reduction only. Their highly effective ranking doesn't change, but if they have more than 16 absences over a two-year period, then they will be included in the effective teacher at times when the staff reduction policy is being implemented. But those absences do not include FMLA or district-related absences. We also discussed crowdfunding policy. Dearborn Education Foundation is the exclusive platform that should be used for crowdfunding for educational resources for Dearborn Public Schools and students, instead of GoFundMe and others. Now, that's specifically educational resources.
So, class, classroom.
Books, things like that, classroom supplies, things that teachers need. We discussed, again, filling a board vacancy, and we tabled them, and we need further discussion. So, I would like to, whoever takes on the role as the Policy Committee Chair next year, I need to meet with them, have kind of a dialogue, kind of tell them what we've discussed. I need to meet with them, have kind of a dialogue, kind of tell them what we've discussed, what thoughts we've had, because I've.
If you're not still on the policy.
Does it say why you're in there?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind.
She's going to volunteer for a different committee.
I am, most definitely. Then we also talked about iChat and volunteers for, with a felony. The committee prefers to continue the current iChat guidelines being used. And then, one other thing, we were continually our reviewing of M A S B recommendations for our bylaw changes. We ran out of time because there was so much that we had to cover. But one thing that I made sure that we did discuss is when, in the bylaws, when you have a closed session, there are only certain topics that you're allowed to talk about. Well, our bylaws are kind of outdated because they don't include the topic of security.
Right.
Myself and some other board members always thought that that was lacking, that it should be part of the closed session comment. So, I wanted to, that has changed recently, and I wanted to personally thank Representative Hamud for his work on that and helping pass that again recently. And I believe you said also that.
Former Senator Kenezak, who I know was in contact with him.
David Kenezak had worked on it as well.
Yeah, so they must have been working collaboratively.
Yeah, I think so. But it did just recently pass, and it was very important, and I know a lot of us thought that was something that needed to be done. So, I want to thank him for his efforts on that regard.
Okay, thank you.
And again, we continue just to update things as we're able.
Okay, trustee McDonald.
So, trustee McDonald, you said our bylaws have to be updated as well to match that to, as far as closed session, that we have to amend?
Yes, because it wasn't included. The security topic was not included.
So, now that state did it, we have to do it as well, right?
Yeah, we can still use, go into closed session for it because it is a state.
Law, but.
But we need to update the bylaws to reflect it. That's all. Okay. Any other committees? All right, next item, please.
Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
Okay, trustee Lynn, and then trustee Moses.
Well, I just want to be quick, so. I did read two comments that really touched me, and I'd like to read them, two quotations. They were in regards to the NEA visit. So, our national accrediting body came and visited, as most people know, and found our district to be highly effective. We received a lot of commendations on our daily work. As we finish out this year, I want to read one of the comments that they sent to Dr. Maleko, who passed it on to us, just to remind all of us why we're here. Dearborn Schools represents the very best of our nation, welcoming children from all over the world, providing safety, love, and caring. And when they visited, they reported to Dr. Maleko Doug, I'm not sure who Doug was, but.
Doug Reeves.
Reeves, okay. He said that he spoke with kids in every single classroom, and every single one of our students said, this must have been just recently, just before or around Thanksgiving. I am thankful for my teachers, so. Happy holidays, as we said before, but it's a great thing to finish our year with.
Okay, trustee Moses.
I'd like to acknowledge and thank Novi Public District.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to do that next.
Sure, okay.
Officially, so it can be in the commendations that are.
Absolutely, but that was a wonderful event at Fortson. Stout Theater Company had the Law &amp; Order play last week, and it was just absolutely magnificent. Fortunately, I had to leave early for another event, but it was, it was one of the best performances that I've attended for a play. So, they moved a little bit from musicals, and that was, that was a great choice. Speaking of heroes today, yesterday on CNN, I witnessed one of our community members being awarded as one of the CNN Heroes.
From Zayman.
Ms. Najah Bazi of Zaman International, the nonprofit that is helping the unfortunate ones here who are in extreme poverty. So, we are very proud of Ms. Bazi and the work that she does in our community. And I was really excited to see her there, really proud. So, I thank her and all of the people who are doing things behind the scenes in our community to uplift the Dearborn community. So, thank, thank you, Ms. Najah Bazi, and congratulations to you and to all of us on this amazing award. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Just one thing, I know we're going to formally do this in January, but this is going to be the last, on the P-12 that Mary hits the, so I know we're going to be talking about it, but we, you know, just wanted to appreciate this holiday season, this, and I know Hussein will always say, wait, hold that, you know, with trustee Barry. But anyway, it'll be the last time here. I know we still got the college meeting, and so, you know, had a great year, Mary, under your leadership, and we'll be saying more things next month, and look forward to working with trustee Barry in the next role, so, thank you.
I want to follow up on that. You know what, it was not an easy year, so I thank you for your leadership. I mean, this was.
Appreciate it.
We went through, we went through, you know, one of our good board members leaving, appointment process, the bonds, and that, it was not an easy year, so thank you for your leadership. I also want to wish everybody a happy holiday, Merry Christmas. In the spirit of the holidays, I'll keep this clean. When a vendor bids on one of our contracts, and we, as independent thinkers, have a great discussion, which I thought was a great discussion, and that's why we have these meetings. We don't just approve bids, just approve them. Then when that vendor goes out and puts things on social media, that's not, that's not cool. That's not good. I mean, next time that happens, I will be calling people out, so, but I'll leave that alone right now in the spirit of the holidays, so Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you. All right, next item.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
All right, I just want to remind everybody that when we return in January, we will have an organizational meeting prior to this meeting where we will rotate our executive board around the table. We get to play musical chairs. And to everybody to keep in mind about what committees, because the incoming board president will then be assigning us to committees again and can, there's only so many of us to go around, so there's only so many commendations we can have, but for everybody to, to give some consideration about where their interests lie or where they think their strengths might lie in helping those committees be successful for next year.
So, chair, do we discuss that with the next chair? We tell them our interests?
Right, just wait until January.
Yeah, after the January meeting, I assume we would reach out to people and ask what they would like.
Just a newbie question. Pardon? Just a newbie question. Yeah, I'm just saying, don't start it now. It's a. You got some time, I just, that's why I wanted to give you some time to, to think about it. We know that next year is going to be probably just as challenging, might have some different issues on the table, but I'm sure we'll, we'll all be, and, and I want to remind everyone, we are a team. We're not, nobody's doing this alone. So, just remember that, the effort is put forth by everyone sitting around this table and in those chairs back there. It's not a one-man show for anyone's interests, so we have to work together in order to get.
We are a team, and we are a good team.
And, and we have to work together in order to be effective. So, I just want to, want, want to thank everyone for working with me this year. I appreciate it. And I actually enjoyed it, quite frankly. I liked that challenge. All right, next item, please.
Future meeting dates. Monday, December 16, 2019, HFC Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College, in the Rosenau Boardroom. Monday, January 13, 2020, P-12 Organizational Meeting, 6:45 at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. And Monday, January 13, 2020, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom.
There's one more.
Well, I guess I just didn't want to give up my ideas as a secretary yet. Monday, January 21, 2020, HFC College Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College, in the Rosenau Boardroom.
He didn't want me to hit that gavel.